Following the meeting of the Governance Organization and Legislation Committee to order at 10:30 a.m., because a quorum is present, and I am now going to turn, as chair, I'm going to turn the running of the meeting over to our vice chair Evan Ross for today. Take it away.
All right, thank you. So we have an agenda in the meeting packet. However, we're going to start with an item that is not on the agenda under Items Not Anticipated by the Chair 48 Hours in Advance, which is consideration of this resolution that we received, Resolution Affirming Support for Access to Safe and Legal Abortion in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts and across the United States. Our purview as governance organization and legislation, of course, is to review it for clarity, consistency, and actionability in its content and organization. And so, of course, we're not discussing any of the content of the resolution, but simply whether it is clear, consistent, and actionable. And so, does anyone have, I'm assuming we've all read the resolution before coming here today, does anyone have any comments, questions, recommended changes? Pat?
I'm recommending on page three, the bottom paragraph, I'm recommending on page three, the bottom paragraph, be it further resolved, that the, instead of administrative assistant to the Amherst Town Council, it should read clerk of the council.
Okay. I think that generally accepted, since we don't have an administrative assistant to the Amherst Town Council. Other, other recommended edits? Mandy?
I have two syntactical ones. They are on page three, at the very top, the sort of continued-on paragraph.
Okay.
I believe the verbs prohibits and requires need to be singular prohibit and require. So I would just get rid of the s's, based on how it's worded in that whole paragraph.
And require. Because it's a two clause, right? To ensure, yeah. Yeah, that, I think syntactically that makes sense. And probably a comma after abortion care?
We were in the same paragraph.
Right?
I don't think the comma's needed, because it's only two.
Well, it's ensure, comma.
No, the ensure, and then it says, and among other provisions, is where another comma is, right before the prohibit.
Sure, and require, and to provide, okay. Other comments, questions? We have Lynn Morgan here as, to field any questions, or? Okay, there, but Steve, George?
No.
No?
Any issues in terms of actionability?
None that I see. Does anyone see any, any issues with actionability?
I mean, I think the only action it's asking us is to, we support and then
Right. And then we're asking the clerk.
Commit and then send something on.
Right.
Yeah.
I don't see how that's not actionable.
Certainly.
Okay.
So clear, consistent, actionable? Any final comments before we have a vote?
Yes, I hope, can I do, yeah, I hope you all vote in favor of it at the meeting.
Okay. All right, so with that, I will entertain a motion to declare the resolution as amended, clear, consistent, and actionable?
I see move. Second.
Any further discussion?
Hold on, George is moving.
Yep, and Pat seconded.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right, so call the question, all those in favor of declaring the resolution as amended, clear, consistent, and actionable?
Aye.
Raise your hand, say aye, in favor?
I'm Steve.
All right, unanimous.
Thank you, Lynn, for coming.
Thank you.
See you later.
Okay.
I didn't think sure was anything, but.
No, it's always good to have a sponsor here, just in case something comes up. This one was, this is also the first time that we have reviewed a resolution.
The only issue I have with it is that it's quite long.
Yeah.
But everything in it is.
Chianpact.
Yeah.
All right, so in that case, we will move on to consideration and discussion of revisions to newly adopted rules of procedure. So this is what we've been working on for the last two meetings, and that we're hoping to have a recommendation to the council for their July 22 meeting. So one is a continuation of a discussion we had on June 5. There was a motion to add to section 2.2H that the president serves as the spokesperson of the full council. We did not, at that time, take a vote at our last meeting. We were prepared to discuss this, but realized that the maker of the motion, I believe, was Steve, and the seconder of the motion was Pat. And since neither Pat nor Steve were present at our last meeting, we felt that it was perhaps inappropriate to vote on a motion when the people who made it were not present. And so we tabled it until today. So this is section 2.2. Let's go over my rules.
Page six of the Word document.
Thank you, that's exactly what I needed. So, 2.2, powers and duties of the president and vice president, there has been a recommendation to add an H to that, that the president serves as the spokesperson of the full council. Our discussion over that, I believe from June 5, was whether or not the president was the only point of contact, what does it mean to be the spokesperson of the full council, when is it appropriate for the president to speak, and when is it appropriate for individual counselors to speak? I believe there's still a motion, an active motion to add that. So I'd like to continue the discussion on that. Does anyone have any comments on whether or not to add a rule that the president serves as the spokesperson of the full council? Noting this was an edit, I believe, from a previous drafted text that had, that was a little more detailed, I don't have it in front of me.
Where do you have this? I'm looking at page six, I'm looking.
So it doesn't exist in the Rules of Procedure yet? It'd be a recommended addition, but it's in our, on our agenda?
Yes.
Mandy?
I still don't know what to do about this, because I don't know if it's clear enough to, to indicate, in order for counselors to be able to follow. I know our last discussion dealt with who can speak as counselors. Is this one with just the wording of full council clear enough to indicate that, hey, if a newsplace calls us up, because, say, Pat's sponsoring this Roe resolution, can she talk about it in her own counselor capacity? Or would, if we adopt this 2.2H, would that violate this? I still don't know whether this language is clear enough to say, yes, she can, or whether it's going to create those provisions, those, not provisions, those sort of questions.
Right. And I believe that was also at the time George is concerned, that the rule doesn't necessarily provide any clear guidance. Is that correct, George?
Yes.
So I guess what's our, what's our goal with having such a rule? Steve?
Well, I think the goal is to actually clarify this exact issue, because we have gotten messages from the president stating that, you know, media inquiries shall be sent to, you know, I'm paraphrasing, but to me, the impression is, you shall not talk to the media, you shall refer any queries from the media to me. And I think we need to clarify if that's really what the council wants or not. So I think that offering something that should be obvious, that she can speak for, you know, speaking for the town council, President Griesmeyer said blah, 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 that's totally appropriate. But then, other councils can, should, and can also speak to the media. So that's how I, I think a rule is important, as opposed to no rule, so that we have at least a response to this. So in one case, one particular case, is that I did speak to the media, then we got this email, don't speak to the media. And so the reporter said, is there an actual rule in place that says this? And I was like, I don't think so.
Right. And so the original language that was sent to us from the Rules Committee in the document, Rules and Recommendations for GOL, was, the president shall serve as spokesperson for all press inquiries and correspondence addressed to the full council. The motion that was made was simpler, again, and it was just serve as spokesperson of the full council, so it sort of removed correspondence and media directly called out from that. So is the simplification, then, we're looking for, to provide counselors some sense of clarity, right? And so how do we do that? And does that simplification take away clarity, or, for counselors? Because I don't personally feel, though, as though spokesperson for all press inquiries and correspondence necessarily offers me, as a counselor, any more information. George?
I mean, I certainly appreciate.
Pat?
I'm sorry, was George going to?
No, no.
No, please go ahead, George.
No, actually, I'm thinking.
Okay, Pat?
Evan took my face as thinking face.
I did, I did.
And interpreted it as speaking.
As I often do.
That's all right, it's a, it's a thinking face.
What I'm, I feel grateful that Lynn responds to the emails that go to all of the council out, yeah, so that's positive. I also feel sometimes I still respond, because either I know the person, or the issue concerns me in a certain way, I don't say anything more than what Lynn has said, but I feel it's important that I respond. I'm concerned, just like I cannot speak for the full council, I don't know if the president can truly speak for the full council, unless we've taken a vote, unless we've, unless she's polled all of us, I think, at that point, she needs to speak as her position as a counselor. I'm, I'm not sure about all this, so I'm playing with it. I'm also feel like it's okay if the media contacts her, but I think that if they contact us, we should be able to make up our mind. I don't have, I haven't had any need to respond independently to the media, but I would not like that right being taken away, if there was something I really strongly disagreed with. I'm bumbling around, but that's kind of.
George, assist.
I think on the other hand, we don't want a situation which is just a free-for-all, where anybody and everybody can talk to the media whenever, and they feel like, there is a certain sense, I think, to, through the vast majority of inquiries and these sorts of situations, to have a single voice. So I guess we're trying to find a way to balance what seems to me a practical and reasonable desire, which I think would cover most cases, I may be wrong, but, against the desire of individual counselors to speak on matters of importance to them and to their district, or just matters of importance to them, without having to be sort of cleared or approved. And I don't see, I don't have an answer to this yet, but it seems these are the two things, and they both seem, we could just say, look, anybody and everybody can speak to the press whenever they want, and Lynn doesn't speak for the council any more than anybody else does. We could just say that.
Second.
I would, I would not make that motion. But someone could.
There is, there's still currently a motion, an open motion on the table, we should just say.
No, I was just doing a hypothetical, and, and it's one that I would not endorse, but that I see as an extreme view, but maybe the rest of you don't see it that way, but I see that as an extreme view, and we're trying to find a place, and Evan has said that the original GOL language doesn't really help him. I wonder if we could go back to that just for a second, and just listen, I just need to hear it one more time, and maybe Evan can help me understand how it's not helping him. In other words, that was an attempt to be more specific, and it seemed to fail, at least for Evan and maybe for everybody else. And then we went to this very general language, which seems to be, tell us nothing. So if we could just, Evan, if you wouldn't mind, I don't have it in front of me, I should, the language, the original GOL.
Right, so it's, I don't actually, this isn't original GOL language, this is the document, Rules and Recommendations for GOL, that I believe was compiled by the Rules and Procedure Committee, before they dissolved, with a list of 11 things they wanted GOL to consider. Number five on that is, advise on whether to add a section to the rules that states that the president shall serve as spokesperson for all press inquiries and for correspondence addressed to the full council. And so, the only thing that I see is different is, between what we have and, in front of us in the motion, and this, is that this specifically assigns the president a spokesperson for press inquiries and correspondence addressed to the full council, whereas ours is a bit more general, saying that the president serves as the spokesperson. The reason I don't necessarily feel like this provides more clarity to me is, my assumption is, when you say the president is a spokesperson, anytime the council is asked something for the opinion of the council, it's the president, it sets the president as the default, whereas this sort of only really does it for press inquiries and correspondence. Off the top of my head, I don't know what other things there might be, but generally I, I don't often like to call out specifics unless you, I feel like there's a real need to. And so, I don't know, if, maybe if the president is at a meeting somewhere and is asked a question, and she responds as president of the council, that would be not a press inquiry, or how we picture a correspondence, but would be the president serving a spokesperson, and so. But I think that, maybe to, to help direct us, there's really two questions here that I'm hearing float around, one of which is, does the president speak on behalf of the council? When the president speaks in response to a correspondence or press inquiry, is that on behalf of the council? Is that speaking for the council? Which is one thing that I heard a little bit, certainly from Pat and Steve. And then the second thing is, how do we provide guidance to counselors of essentially, when is it okay to respond, and when is it not okay to respond? And I think, to some extent, those are two separate but related questions. Steve?
Yeah, so if we had a mayor, it'd be so much simpler, because the mayor speaks for the mayor. So the president of the council is not exactly a mayor, so. And, so one example, and I don't, is all the DPW press releases in which the president is quoted. So we, as a council, didn't approve those quotes, we didn't approve, you know, there's an implication that, you know, this is a value of the town. I happen to agree with everything, pretty much everything that was said, but it's not, you know, it's still not the, she's not speaking for the council. So it's complicated, because I don't know who she's speaking for. She's speaking as the president, but she's not speaking, so speaking as the president has a lot of weight, but she's not speaking for the council, she's just speaking.
Some of this could be a test of the leadership and character of the person who has been chosen as president, and the council can form judgments over the course of a year. So maybe, there's only so much we can put into a rule, and I think whatever, I think Evan's right, whatever we do put into a rule should be helpful to people looking at it, should tell them something, as opposed to some just banal generality. But we perhaps shouldn't try to, or maybe we just can't, put a rule in that covers every possible case, and there's going to be just an area where counselors will form their own judgment about how a president deals with these sorts of things, and if they're not happy, they can express that both to the president personally, also to the council, and eventually, if they really are unhappy, could, you know, decide that they would not like this person to continue as president, assuming that they chose to do, to try and do that. So maybe we'd try to get a rule that's clear enough that it actually does say something, but not try to get a rule that covers every possible case, because they will never get that. And keep in mind that part of this is judgment, and we may or may not agree with the president every time she, or he makes a judgment, but it's a, it's something that comes with time, and we, you know, and experience, so.
That was helpful for me, George, in the sense that I don't think Lynn has said anything at any time that I, that bothered me in some way, that I wanted to make a public statement about it. I think she's done a good job of speaking about issues, and I think that is part of the role of the president, is to speak for the council. It just feels, it just feels like a limit, and, but I, I agree that it could be addressed. If I really had something that I needed to say to the paper, I could certainly call Lynn, and then I'm speaking as myself, as a counselor, to, if I then go ahead and do the paper thing, I don't know. So I think George is right, it can be, it can be fairly direct and simple.
So are people okay with this, again, Evan, I guess I'm asking you this, it says specifically, all press inquiries and correspondence addressed to the full council, so, you know, any kind of, you know, letter that comes, or email that comes addressed to the full council, Lynn always responds to, and I appreciate that. And we, at least so far, agreed not to, to respond, but if something is sent to me individually, I would assume that we all can respond to that individually, we don't, we don't clear that with the president, we don't, hopefully we use our judgment too, but that's, that's a separate matter. So are people, I think that does provide me with some sense of clarity, that if it's a correspondence or press inquiry that's addressed to the council, we want the president to respond. And if we're not happy with the response, that's something we can deal with at some other time, but we're okay with that. But individual inquiries? If somebody, you know, like you mentioned, Evan, someone sends them, a correspondent calls up Pat and wants to talk about this resolution, and addresses her directly, I 'd assume that's Pat's call, right? Or no?
Mandy?
So I'm trying to figure out whether I like the, you know, sort of the language that was proposed out of the Rules Committee, or not discussed in Rules, but came out of Rules by a member, or the motion that's currently on the table, which is just serve as spokesperson of the full council. And I keep going back and forth. But maybe the original sort of language that was presented to us is better, because it's less broad and more specific. And the current motion is serve as spokesperson for the full council. That's really broad, and I think why it's not helping me, because it's so broad, but as George was talking about, for all press inquiries and for correspondence addressed to the full council, I can see situations where if a, a press reporter calls me up, that's not addressed to the full council. But if the reporter calls up Town Hall and says, we want a comment from the council, Town Hall knows, well, that's addressed to the council, that goes to the president. And so, I, I think this wording might need, the, to the full council might need clarified as to what that clause applies to, that it applies to both segments in that wording, but maybe that wording is more helpful to not just counselors, but staff, and town staff, of, if it's addressed, if correspondence or press inquiries are addressed to the council, we want, we're sending it to the council, who responds? But if it comes to us, or the phone call to our personal number, that's not addressed to the full council, and so I could choose to or not. I could push it off and say, no, you really need to talk to the president on that one, or I could respond myself. So maybe that more specific language is better with a little tweaking to make sure to the full council is clearly applying to both clauses.
What about ceremonial situations where, again, we have been quite comfortable, and maybe this is just not an issue here, but I'm thinking of all the kinds of situations where many of us are present, but Lynn speaks for the council, saying, thank you, you know, we're glad we're here, whatever. That's, would seem to be, that, this general statement covers that kind of situation. So ceremonial, public events, we are comfortable with and would expect the president to speak, and at least on one or two occasions, she's then, when she's not available, she turns to the vice president, again, seems appropriate. Does that need to be in the rules? And if, I mean, this current statement is, that would cover that, it covers about everything. But being precise in talking about press inquiry and correspondence, do we need to add something to the effect that, and, you know, in general, speaks for the council in public settings, or is that just assumed? Is that?
So, so the rules cover that already on 2.2E, just look up three lines, perform ceremonial functions, but the charter actually does say, the president shall perform ceremonial functions and on the other duties, so that part is covered.
Thank you.
So I think that my only real, I'm, I'm actually wondering if maybe, sort of a hybridized version of the two might be best, and I think that the reason that I'm not, so, president spokes, president serves as spokesperson of the full council says that anything that's intended to represent the opinion of the council comes from the president, much like what Mandy Jo said. So if, if I go out and I say a whole bunch of things, no one, no one's going to think that's the, the council speaking, right? But when Lynn says things, people will say, okay, well, this is coming as her, as her role as the council. And I do think that's appropriate, I mean, I think that the town manager speaks on behalf of town staff, I think that department heads speak on behalf of their department, so I think it makes sense for her to be able to do that. What I think sort of bothers me about this language is, sort of the, the way I read it, is, the president is the person who responds to all press inquiries and correspondence addressed to the full council, and I think I read it that way because that's how it's intended, right? But I'm thinking about, when we were getting a lot of emails for 132 North Hampton Road, Lynn responded to every single one that was addressed to the full council, and I'm very grateful she did, because I couldn't keep up with them. There were also some that were addressed to just me, and those I responded to, but there were also some that were addressed to the full council, but came from constituents of mine, right, people in District Four. And I responded to those two, and I said, and my email always said, I know you've already received a response from the president, but I wanted to also respond to you as your district counselor. And there, there's a reading of this that could say, well, that was addressed to the full council, Lynn had to respond to that, that wasn't for you to respond to. But I feel like I have the, I'm not speaking on behalf of the council, but if I want to reach out, or, you know, after the, the date was changed for the, you know, I, I emailed every person from District Four who had emailed the full council, and said, just so you know, the date has been changed on this open meeting, because not all of them, I'm not sure, had been emailed by the, the president. And so, I don't want to, I don't want to, so I guess, maybe with something that says, the president shall serve as spokesperson of the council for all press inquiries addressed, so in other words, when it's addressed to the full council and she's speaking, she's, I, I don't want to, I guess I don't want a rule that hints to counselors that they can't respond, even though I do sort of feel like that's the intention of this rule, right? And that's why I think that the simpler language is just clarifying, look, only the president can speak on behalf of the full council, but it didn't necessarily restrict any individual counselor's ability from responding to anything, because I, I do feel like there have been some counselors who have felt as though they were not, not officially reprimanded, but sort of, it was frowned upon that they had responded, right? And I don't necessarily feel like that's appropriate, if, if we want to respond, we should, as long as it's clear that that response doesn't represent the whole council, right? Steve?
Yeah, so then I always say, and what's the implication? So let's pretend that I talk to the Gazette, and I say, no, I can speak for the council, that we're all totally against this. So what are the implications he, that gets published? Do I get censured? Do I, what happens? I mean, in other words, we don't have a three dollar fine?
I think that's really an appropriate statement.
It's totally inappropriate. What happens if I do it? I break the rule, so. Yeah, no, we don't have a.
Well, just never speak to him again. I mean, it's, he'll be shunned.
I would say if it's a rule broken, the implication is a potential censure or some sort of, I mean, there's nothing in our rules that say, "How do we enforce these?" But I guess there could be a motion that says, any other counselor could make a motion at some point that says, "I move to censure Counselor Schreiber for breaking rule blah, 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 blah on this day."
On multiple occasions.
I, I really think that you, you know the answer to your own question because it really is that we speak for ourselves as counselors. We don't speak for the council.
So we've been talking about this for kind of a while. And Mandy Jo?
I was going to say, could I suggest maybe an alternate wording?
Sure.
Serve as the spokesperson of the council to all, or for all inquiries and correspondence addressed to the full council.
Serve as spokesperson of the council.
For all inquiries and correspondence addressed to the full council.
So we have a motion on the table, so we have a couple options. We can, the motion maker could withdraw that motion and you could make that motion, or we could, you could offer that as an amendment. And we could vote on that if people feel like they prefer, there seem, my, my sense of the group seems to be that no one, except maybe me, likes the language of the actual motion. So.
And I was the maker of the motion.
You were the maker, I believe, right? We'd have to check the minutes, but I think that was the discussion last time.
Yeah, I think that's right. So I'd be happy to withdraw.
The motion on the table is to add section 2.2H, sir, that the president serves as spokesperson of the full council. So Steve, are you withdrawing that motion?
I will withdraw.
Okay, so that motion's been withdrawn.
Can I do that unilaterally or does the second have to?
I think the motion maker can just do it unilaterally. But I'm looking to Mandy Jo because she's more experienced with this than I am.
Probably just unilaterally, but it would be beneficial, I guess, if the seconder agreed. I'll look up who the seconder is.
I believe it's Pat.
Yeah, I agree with.
No, it was you Evan.
No.
He only seconded it to put it on the table.
Interesting. Well, so I will, I will.
Don't speak for him.
I will agree to that. So.
So now we have, I'm sorry.
There's, well, there's been no other, Mandy Jo put out some language, but it wasn't offered as a motion. We've been talking about this for two meetings and kind of a while today, so I'd love to move on. So does anyone want to place that language in motion?
I'll do it, but let me, so I move to add section 2.2H, quote, "Serve as spokesperson of the council for all inquiries and correspondence addressed to the full council."
All press inquiries?
Just inquiries.
Just inquiries.
I see what you did there. All right, so there is a motion on the table. Is there any further discussion about this?
Hasn't been seconded.
Pat seconded it.
I'm sorry.
She just did it very softly.
Sorry.
Sorry, George.
It's okay. And we've removed press because?
Then it doesn't have to be from the press. It could be, we were talking about potentially other situations where someone calls up. It doesn't necessarily have to be a press member that says, "I'm looking for a statement." I don't know.
I, I think that also, and I, I think it was in the June 5th meeting that Steve brought this up, that the nature of press is changing and can be hard to define sometimes, right? So as, as someone who's tweeting about things at press, so I, I think I like the idea of removing press because it. Any other discussion?
Just one quick thought. Does it make sense to add something to the effect that nothing in this rule should be of that kind of language, or should we just leave it? Let it just, if it comes up in discussion, it'll be discussed and people will say, "This does not prohibit you from, you know, responding individually," as Evan suggested. Is it worth putting it explicitly in this, or is it just let it, let it lie? But you could put language to the fact that nothing in this rule should be construed as forbidding a counselor from blah, blah, blah. Is that overkill?
I mean, we could add counselors may respond to inquiries on their, on an individual basis, or something like that. But I, I think I'm tempted to leave it out for now.
We know this is, well, this will come up and should come up in discussion, and that's fine, and it will be answered. If it does become a, a major problem, I guess we could revisit the rule, but perhaps we leave it as it is and then deal with it in the full council. I get the sense from this body that everyone agrees, there's nothing in this rule that prohibits a counselor from speaking on their own behalf.
Any final discussion? Okay, so the motion on the table is to add section 2.2H, "The president serves as a spokesperson of the council for all inquiries and correspondence addressed to the full council." All of those in favor, raise your hands. Okay, that's unanimous.
Could we break up the votes a little bit so it's a little harder for her to take matters?
So I want to actually, we have a few other things. Actually, so we have one more thing to do with rules from the recommendation. We have another thing that wasn't a recommendation or discussion follow-up of non-rules of procedure revisions, which is having to do with resolutions and proclamations citations that I think George was going to follow up with Alyssa on. The other thing we have in front of us is that July 22nd date for advising the council on publication of candidate statements. Go ahead, Mandy Jo.
We have two more things under this one, the advise on work groups.
Yep, that's right.
And then the vote on the, what we're bringing, if we're going to, if we're ready to vote, yeah.
That's sort of the, but as far as like actual thing, like rules to discuss, I think it's, it's the work groups and that. So I was in charge of drafting some language for work groups. I did not upload it to the package, to the packet, because I felt as though it was very much my opinion of how work groups should operate and that uploading it to the packet before the meeting could constitute an expression of opinion to a quorum. So I will do that now. The question that I want to ask the committee is, given that you haven't really had time to look at this, we can open this discussion, but I'm not super convinced, well, let's look at that and see how you think. So I just uploaded to the packet draft work group rules. And so for some background, rule, our rules of procedure that we adopted, I believe it's 10.5, I just need, oh wait, I think, actually, hold on guys, I had a different packet open that I uploaded it to. So let me upload it to the correct packet. I was in our June 5th packet. And I'll delete it from the other one. Okay, it should be up there now. So the rules that we officially adopted, I believe on May 22nd in the council, had, we adopted 10.5 work groups, but there was no language under it. And so it came through this committee to actually put together the rules that would go under that section. We began discussing this a little bit last meeting and didn't get very far and decided we needed some draft language to look at beyond what rules of procedure had put to us. So rules of procedure sample language was very simple, which was, "Standing or ad hoc council committees may establish work groups to consider a measure if they determine that the issue is sufficiently complex to warrant analysis of alternative approaches and/or consequences of actions. Work groups shall be given a timeline for reporting back to the originating council committee. Work groups may include members of the public. Work groups are usually subject to open meeting law. The chair of the appointing authority shall provide, preside until the work group chair is elected." They also gave us some questions as to open meeting law, who appoints. I tried to work in as much of that language as possible, but also expanded on it to provide, hopefully, some clarification. Most of this is my personal opinion of how work group rules should be. Some of it is, I didn't really have an opinion, and so I put something in there for the purpose of discussion. Specifically, that would be numbered, or letter D, which is who appoints the work groups. I think that there's probably some discussion to be had about who should actually appoint members of the work group. So I don't know, if people want to take a moment to just read through these rules, and I will not take offense to any critiques. Are you in our packet?
I thought I was before. This is where I am, so.
I should go to our packet. Draft work group rules. So if people, when people are done reading, I can speak a little bit to some of the decisions I made. And then you are free to ask questions. Steve?
So I'm trying to operationalize this. So, so one example would be, we need a work group to study the work group issue. So that would be totally appropriate for the GOL to, that could be just informal. Let's have two people work on this, so we don't have a quorum. Do we even need to call that a work group? But then I think of the more complex things, like the public art proposal, which is sort of multiple committees. So in that one, public art, it wouldn't be appropriate for the CRC to make a work group because it seems to, how do we know when?
Right.
The CRC is a work group for that, but how do you, yeah, how do we know when we, it's our call to create a work group?
Right. So let me speak to this a little bit then. So in, in putting this together, I sort of tried to figure out, right, the, what is it, the five questions? So what is a work group, right? Who would even be on it? Why would we create one? How would we create one? And so the first question is, what differentiates an ad hoc committee from a work group, right? And so if GOL or CRC or any committee wanted a smaller group to study things, that would just be an ad hoc committee. So what differentiates a work group? And, and my thought was, what makes something a work group is that it includes member, it includes people who are not members of the body. So if CRC had an interesting art issue and you felt as though you needed further study, but there wasn't really the expertise on CRC to fully consider that, maybe you'd make a work group that's two members of CRC, but then you would bring in two members of the public. Or even two members of the council but who don't serve on CRC. So that wouldn't necess, that could still be considered an ad hoc committee, but to kind of distinguish them, what differentiates it is that it brings in people from outside that committee.
Not clear to me that really differentiates it from an ad hoc committee.
So the question is. So actually, here, maybe here, maybe this is a good question also for Mandy Jo, right? Is what did rules of procedure envision when they created work groups that were separate from ad hoc committees?
It's hard to answer because I think I was one of the people on rules that had a problem envisioning the difference between the two. But I think the thought was that work groups would be more nimble and would be able to be formed quicker without the necessary application procedures. If you've got members of the publics for an ad hoc committee or something, I mean, obviously if it's just a council ad hoc committee, there's no real application procedure. But if you're going to include members of the public, there's the CIF procedure and all of that. And I think the thought was that sometimes it might be desirable to not have to go through all of that and to just be able to say, "Hey, you expert at UMass, would you be willing to work on this group to draft this legislation?" Or you expert here, or you expert from this group, and sort of go out and just recruit and form within a week, you know, very quickly, a group of people that could start and get it done within a shorter amount of time than if we formed an ad hoc town committee? Or an ad hoc council committee that needed, that would have non-counselors on it, because then you have to go through a lot larger and longer of a process with an actual charge, with an actual waiting time, 14 days to apply and post that this is open, and that this would allow more nimbleness in skipping that. And so I think the question becomes, is that wise to allow that nimbleness? And being able to skip opening up an application to everyone in town is sort of where I sit on, is it wise?
Pat?
I'm thinking about the, this resolution that we looked at today and the one I'm working on about Medicare for All. I got approached by residents, we formed a work group to work on these two resolutions. And that doesn't, that's sort of a nimbleness. I could have invited another counselor or something like that. So that's a flexibility I appreciate and seems important. I'm left with a question of who gets to pick who the expert is? The difference in my work group is that there was a group of people already working on this, and it's aligned with my values. But who gets, who gets to decide? And I think we do need flexibility. I'm just not clear how we balance, or if we even do now, balance voices. I'm not sure.
I'm beginning to wonder then, and you guys can help me, why would one ever want a creative? to create an ad hoc committee of any kind? Seems like work groups would be the way to go. So, again, I'm just trying to get clear in my own mind, the difference between the two. Mandy has made clear that the ad hoc committee is a bit more involved. It would involve CAF, Public Application Process. I take it. So, would it be that the issue is so complex and so fraught, or it just has so many different perspectives, as opposed to a work group where we'd like to think it's more technical, it's more focused on gathering data, information? It's, in other words, not so much policy, but I'm just trying to get a sense of difference. And, because when I'm listening to you, I'm thinking, well, I would never form an ad hoc committee that would just have work groups. And that's clearly not desirable, I take it. So, what's the difference? And how do people see it? Is it more larger issues where there are clear differences of opinion? So, you want to make sure lots of different voices are heard? So, it would be an ad hoc committee? Or is it, what's the difference?
Just going to say quickly, having an ad hoc committee doesn't mean that a lot of different voices will be heard. We, you know.
So, I think the biggest difference is time. An ad hoc committee would be slower because of the multiple meetings it would take to actually form one and then get committee members appointed versus a work group where it could be done near immediately. I don't know whether that's a good thing, though.
Well, there was a work group created over the recreation fields, right? Is there a work group for the, isn't it called a work group that, working on the problem of the downtown recreation?
They're called work groups, but they're really just committees. Time-limited committees, ad hoc committees, in a sense. And so, yeah, this is where my struggle in rules was with this whole concept.
But you, you have a problem, you see it, it's arisen, you know, for instance, with the, and you want to, okay, yeah, I'm just, right.
Keep turning this off, because I'm not used to this.
This stays on all the time.
I know, and I'm not used to it. So, I think that, this is the, sort of the first question I approached with this, and I think that one of the things that has bothered me since we started this position is the way that we use a lot of terms interchangeably to mean different things. And so, you know, Pat and I, yesterday, were dealing with the question of, what's the difference between an associate and an alternate on a committee, right? And is there a real difference? And if there is, do we define, right? And so, that was sort of my thought, is if we're going to have rule 10.4 be ad hoc committees and rule 10.5 be work groups, there needs to be something that reasonably differentiates them. My mind, my preference, but I also recognize that we already have broken this, is that a committee that is served, formed to serve the council shall be formed of counselors. And that the difference between a work group was it's a, is it's created by the council to serve the council, but can allow non-counselors on it, right? Can allow people who aren't part of that original committee to actually be on it. Now, of course, we have resident members of the finance committee, and so that doesn't necessarily hold. But I think that there needs to be something that when we say committee, it means something to people, and that when we say work group, it means something to people. And so, to me, the difference was, one, it's membership, and then, two, what Mandy Jo was saying, you don't have to jump through all those hoops. And that, so that's why I put in there, C, that they don't require a formal charge, that every, so that we don't have to, I don't want, I don't ever, ever, ever want GOL have, to have to evaluate a charge for a work group. Which is why I said, look, all this information should be in the motion. The question of who appoints, you know, I threw in there the chair of whatever body created it, with the assumption that you wouldn't need a CAF process, the chair could just say, okay, these people. Whether that's the best idea, I don't know, because that really depends on who the chair of a committee is. You know, maybe you wouldn't want me picking everyone who's going to be on a committee, because my view of who's an expert in the committee might, in the community, might be very different. And so, actually, I think that D is probably the most contentious part of this.
You know, it lobs down to, sinks down to the idea of trust. If we're, if, if the, as a GOL, it would be easy for, hey, Mandy Jo and I are going to look into this issue, because we're really interested in it, and we're going to do that, and we come back and report to you. I don't think we have to do anything. That's a normal part of the committee.
Right.
But now, we're sort of saying, if Mandy Jo and I want to get Lynn Morgan working with us, we have to form a work group. Or who would, I mean, it's.
I don't think you would have to, right? But you, you could.
No, we don't have to have it.
I think a subcommittee of a committee, I mean, if, if two people are named, we sent Evan to draft this, because you don't have to follow open meeting law if only one person is. If we sent two of us to draft it, we'd have to post the meeting, but I think that committee can ask at any time for anyone to help them.
Right.
Talk with them, look over stuff, help them.
Right.
Without having them.
Go through.
Yeah, like, if, if we were assigned to look at some resolution, and we were like, we don't have a clue whether this is accurate or not, let's talk to someone. We could do that without forming a specific thing, because that's our prerogative as a committee. I'm still not sure we need work groups. I mean, I think I lean towards deleting this section completely, but.
So, I guess one example of where it could be useful is, say, the percent for art thing. So, that CRC, in theory, could have said, we need a lot more research on this, so we're going to create a work group, and we're going to put in the motion, the work group will have two members of CRC, two members of finance committee, and two members of the public, or the Public Art Commission, right? And then.
That's actually something that might happen regularly.
Right. And so, that would make sense to have, right? But what would, would that be, an ad hoc committee? And if so, do you need to go through those processes of getting those two Public Art Commission members on there? And I don't, to me, you don't. I think if it's an ad hoc committee of the council, you don't have to go through the CAF process personally.
Right. Yeah. It seems like if we're, particularly if we're drawing people from committees that have already been appointed to committees, it's when you bring in something, someone that's not on a committee. And I don't know how that would work.
So, to take that example, if CRC wants two people from here, two people from here, and two people from public art, they could create a charge, or under this work group, not. But if they created that formal charge, it would say, two people from Public Art Commission. It wouldn't need to go through CAF, and then public art could.
Pick those.
Pick those.
But if they want, it should be two members of the public.
Yeah, then.
I still don't think that.
See, this is something.
Oh, I was going to say, George, I think, had something to say.
No, no, please, go ahead. George?
No, I'm, yeah, I'm just thinking.
Because I'm on CRC, and Steve, please help me here. I feel, or contradict me, whatever you want to do.
I can't speak for the CRC.
I, I feel that we are going to need, on a regular basis, to be collaborating with other committees, because they have information on, you know, we, we're going to need to collaborate with the finance committee to understand financial impacts, not just wait for their recommendations. If we're looking at the impact of a bylaw, or something like that, or a proposal, then we need flexibility to meet with other committees. And, and I think residents, so. And that's me speaking about it. So, Steve, if you want to add or delete.
I totally agree. Yeah, I agree. George?
Trying to get people in the community who are not members of a formal committee, or counselors, on a work group. What are people's thoughts on that? Initially, my thought was, gee, it's great, just grab somebody, and, you know, because they've got this expertise or knowledge, and put them to work. But what I'm also hearing or thinking to myself is, but this, of course, is short-circuiting certain processes that are in place for a reason. Nimbleness is good. Is it? I mean, I'm having conversations with constituents who have far more knowledge than I do about, say, an issue like healthcare, Mandy's, you know, so if you wanted, you know, if we wanted to bring somebody like that into the conversation, but they're not on a committee, they're just someone who's done a lot of work, or has some, a passion or interest, but there's a danger here, isn't there? That sort of, that arbitrarily I, or a chair, or somebody, just picks a citizen and puts them on a, a public body to do work without sort of going through the usual process? And is that, does that trouble people? Should it trouble us? Because I understand the desire, I feel it, you know, grab this person, put them to work, you know, they've got a lot to offer. Let's not waste our time with, you know, having to go through all the process, and blah, 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 blah.
Does it make a difference if someone is invited to speak to the group, to the work group? They're not a member of?
Well, no, that, you can invite somebody to come and talk, sure.
Yeah.
I'm talking about putting somebody on this group to do some real work.
I know, I know, which is what I prefer, but.
Yeah, yeah. But do we want to create a system or a process that basically allows us to circumvent certain procedures knowingly, because we find it easier, makes things quicker? I mean, there's, there's attraction to that. But it's also putting us in a dicey position where it seems like we're trying to get around certain things, or not.
So, I agree 100% with what Pat said earlier, that, that committees need flexibility, that there might be a time when it, to some extent, maybe it doesn't always make sense that this issue needs to be referred to both CRC, honestly, CRC and finance are probably the two that might create. I mean, I don't, I don't see too many instances where GOL or OCA will have to create work groups. Maybe they will. OCA may be around outreach, but certainly, there might be times where committees have to work across, when an issue cuts across committees, they might want to work together, they might want to bring in residents. I, I agree with what Pat said about that flexibility. I guess my, my question is, I'm still having a little bit of trouble differentiating between ad hoc committee and a work group. And the reason is, what Mandy was saying about sort of process, I'm not 100% convinced that that necessarily applies to work, to, to ad hoc, ad hoc committees, because they're committees of the council, and so they don't have to follow the traditional rules of multiple member bodies, because they're of the council. And so, we've had at least two ad hoc committees, neither of which had a charge, right? So, we haven't in the past forced charges for ad hoc council committees. We don't net, we don't have a CAF process to appoint counselors, but if it's a council committee, I don't see why we would need a CAF process to appoint residents. There's a part of me that's wondering, if we scrap 10.5 and just edit 10.4 ad hoc council committees to make it a little bit more.
Flexible.
Clear, or flexible, or expansive. Because if we're having trouble, if, if the main difference, if we're saying, oh, yeah, you could have residents on an ad hoc council committee, and if we're saying, well, you don't really need a CAF, or you don't really need a charge for an ad hoc council committee, then I don't see the difference between the two. And if there really isn't a good functional difference, maybe the answer is actually editing 10.4 to reflect better what we want than creating a whole new category. George?
This is pretty pathetic, but why not? It's just, work group sounds so, like.
I like it.
We're going to get something done. And it's focused, and it's on X, and it's, it's right there in, in the statement, and that's all they're going to do, and they can't go off and do anything else, and they have a time certain, et cetera. This is pathetic, I know, but it's just, ad hoc committee sounds so, nothing's ever going to happen, because it's an ad hoc committee, and it'll just, but, I know it's stupid. But keeping it just because I like the name is a sad commentary, but I guess if I try to make a distinction, it is, again, back to the idea that it's extremely, it's specific to a particular issue or problem, it's clearly defined in the, in the, the statement or resolution that created it. Whereas an ad hoc committee, you know, has more freedom, leeway, it can go, you know, the ones we've created have a certain amount of flex, you know, they can go off and do other things within some limits, right? But a work group, if you can't, if you're doing recreation fields, that's what you're doing. If you're doing healthcare costs, that's what you're doing. And, but maybe that's just the difference in the end, it doesn't make it. But I'd like to save them, but it's, I hear Evan's point.
Mandy?
So, if we take Evan's suggestion, I'm, I'm reading 10.4 now, which is very basic.
Yep.
I think the only thing that we might need to change is the last sentence of the main paragraph, which is, council charges to establish ad hoc committees shall specify the purpose and membership. We could change that to council motions, because a motion is to adopt a charge, or a motion could be to create. If we change it to motions, that might give the flexibility needed for it. It would prohibit committees of the council from creating ad hoc council committees, but that doesn't prohibit them from creating subcommittees as CRC, no, as OCA has already done. The subcommittee has to include members of the committee, though, that's generally the thought of what a subcommittee is. But if we wanted to allow ad hoc committees created by council committees, we could probably change this one to say that council or council committee may establish ad hoc committees. But I'm not sure we want to give that authority to a committee. Well, I'm thinking that then a committee could essentially do an end run around the whole council on something.
Right.
That might not, I, I don't know. I mean, all of it, as, as Pat says, goes back to trust, too.
Yeah. I think we should just make work groups and not say anything about them.
Steve?
Well, I think one example that Pat gave was that nothing prevents, like, any counselor but working by him or herself can work with other people on anything they feel like.
Right.
And come, and then that counselor can be the sponsor of a measure. I mean, that we've already, that, that already happens. So, I think what happens is when you get more than one counselor, that it becomes, or where it becomes, seems to be a subset of a committee or of the council itself. But nothing in this, this act prevents any citizen work group that includes.
Right.
A counselor, actually, multiple counselors, as long as there's another quorum.
Right.
Right. It's just formalizing what I bet is a, a common practice already for most counselors there, probably, when you're doing work on different issues, you're meeting with people. Maybe, I mean, I don't know.
Might become a common practice when we get time.
That's true. I had to stop the whole set in my kitchen, got my meetings on at 1:30.
So, I think that the, the difference between, you know, Pat's example and what this envisions is, this is to address a need that's identified by the council or a committee. And so, if the committee says, we need people to examine this, and it's more than one counselor, then, you know, it is, it is a subcommittee. The question is, I mean, you could have a subcommittee that heavily consults with residents, right? But do you actually want them? I guess the big difference is, do you, do they have a vote, right? And, you know, in theory, any committee could create a subcommittee, and the council could create an ad hoc committee, and they could be encouraged in the motion to create, to bring in residents, right? I mean, you could even specify the number of residents, those residents just don't have a vote. To some extent, I would, I would perhaps argue that a resident shouldn't have a vote on a council committee, right? I mean, that's why finance committee members are non-voting. I, I was just, I was going to say, I'm going to say this, I know Pat's going to disagree with it. Because they're there, they're there for consultation, they're there for their opinion, for their expertise, but at the end of the day. expertise, but at the end of the day, if it's a committee to serve the council, the votes should be the counselors. So I guess, there's a lot of, what is this trying to accomplish? And I keep hearing a lot of things that I'm not convinced can't be accomplished within the current structure that we have and the rules, other than the name. Maybe we can call them ad hoc work committees.
How about ideators? Sub work committees? Collaborators. Collaborators.
Mandy?
So can I make a motion?
Sure.
Please do.
I'm going to move to delete section 10.5 in its entirety and renumber the remaining sections appropriately.
There's been a motion made, is there a second?
I can still second it. Waiting for George.
Are we ready for discussion yet? Do we have a second?
It has a second from Pat.
Somewhat seconded.
So we're open for discussion.
So we were sent off to develop a way to enable work groups.
Yep.
And our solution has been to eliminate them. Maybe that is...
In a way, that does enable it.
Go ahead, Steve.
Yeah, in a way, it does enable it because it takes away all the restrictions.
I don't feel, I'm personally speaking, I don't feel ready to make such a drastic decision, though in the end I might be won over, maybe even today, but I think given the complexities of this, maybe I'm making it more complex than it is. But I don't feel personally ready to just eliminate this. I'm still struggling with what we believe already exists with a little modification that will do exactly what this was supposed to do. And the answer may be, it is, we do have it, it's there, and I just would need that to be in my own mind, a little clearer. And once we're clear, then I could say, yes, okay, let's eliminate this. But at the moment, maybe it's just me, but I can't, I'm not clear enough yet to support this motion.
Mandy?
So I'll speak to it. I've always had trouble differentiating between the two, as many counselors here, or at least one other counselor here has recognized, that I'm still not sure between the difference between ad hoc committee and work group. My biggest concern with work groups as we look at them is the avoidance of the CAF process and the ability to just, one person to just say, you're on it. If we've got a policy matter that is so complicated, I think the current draft of work group before I moved to eliminate it was sufficiently complex to warrant in-depth research beyond the capabilities of the originating body. I don't feel comfortable having one person, not having one person, that I'm comfortable with in a sense. I don't feel comfortable with avoiding the traditional ways and means of garnering interest and gathering interest in serving on that work group committee, whatever you want to call it, that is sufficiently complex. I think it should be something that is put out to every resident in town for an interest and advertised for a certain amount of time. And I do think this, everything we've talked about, about what a work group would be for, creating flexibility, creating ability to do it quicker, circumvents all of that. And I'm not comfortable with circumventing a process that would lean heavily potentially on those we already know about instead of those that we might not know about that could be interested.
So I'm feeling very torn. On the one hand, as I said, I don't necessarily, I agree with a lot of what Mandy Jo said, and I also think a lot of what the intentions were behind work groups could probably be accomplished, especially if we revised the language a little bit of 10.4. I'm also feeling a little bit of what George said, which is the council voted, I think unanimously for these rules with the assumption that work groups would be in there and we would draft the rules for them. And now to come back, on the other hand, we could say, look, we discussed this and we, you know, this is our consideration. One of my other areas of slight discomfort is that I unfortunately did not read all of the minutes from the Rules of Procedure Committee, and so don't necessarily know too much about the debate that went into this recommendation. We have one of the five members of Rules of Procedure here, which is a great insight, but it was also one of the five members who was opposed to the inclusion of this. And there is a part of me that would like to hear perhaps from the members of Rules of Procedure who championed to get this in the rules. And so I, there's a part of me that's also, that's sort of wondering if perhaps, I don't know if I agree with what I'm about to say, but in the same way that we often invite sponsors in, if it would make sense to invite a member of Rules of Procedure who thought this was really important to say, here are our concerns, why did you want this in here? And, you know, and maybe they'll say, yeah, you know what, you're right, and maybe they'll have a good reason that we haven't heard. So there's a part of me that agrees with George, and I'm not quite sure I'm ready to vote on this.
I would vote no on it. I think we should have somebody on the other side.
Is it possible? Mandy?
So can I provide a solution where we might still be able to get these rules to the council by?
I would love that.
By the 22nd? Leave, I can withdraw my motion, leave work groups as it is, which is just highlighted, will be in later, propose everything else we've done to the council, report out that we're still working on work groups. The person who most advocated for this was Kathy Shum. Shane? Shane? So I would recommend inviting her to one of the next meetings. I'm sure she would be delighted to come and speak to it all.
And I think you could, we could inform the council that we formed a work group to examine with, we should keep work groups.
So I think that that's what I'll, I think that we should, so the motion's been withdrawn, so we don't need a table.
I will formally withdraw.
Okay. And so I will talk to Kathy and see if she's available to come to our July 24th meeting to have a discussion with her about work groups. But I would say now that I probably wouldn't intend to vote on anything on work groups for that 24th meeting, especially since we have another meeting before the council meets again after the 22nd. So the 24th, I think, would just be discussion. So with that, then, we have gone through all of, I believe, and Mandy Jo, please correct me if I'm wrong, the recommendations from Rules Committee. Mandy, is the, with the exception of the one that we adopted today on the president as the spokesperson, does the Rules of Procedure that's in our packet represent everything that we've done to date?
Yes, the only addition would be the one that is titled with three changes. So I think there were, no, I think only one is uploaded, right?
There's only one in our packet.
There's one uploaded, that is the one that represents work to date and updated table of contents, except for one thing which I'd like to bring up, and then it does not have 2.2H that we just added in today. And I have a new document that does have that in with a comment that says by unanimous vote on July 10th. I just want to bring up Appendix C.
Okay.
That we've never dealt with. It is in there, I don't think it's ever referenced in the rules itself, and it is supposed to be the OCA Appointment and Appointment Confirmation Process.
And that will have to remain...
I was wondering whether we just want to vote to delete the appendix completely, Appendix C completely. Appendix C.
Did we delete Appendix B?
We did delete Appendix B, so we would have to rename.
What was Appendix B?
Appendix B was supposed to be the Town Council Committee charges, and we moved to just hyperlink directly to the right pages on the website. So Appendix C would need renamed to B, it would need to be put back into the table of contents. But I kind of want to just get rid of it.
So I will speak for myself and not as Chair of OCA. Obviously, we have a current appointment process, it will not be the appointment process in the future. Future generations of OCA may also revise that process. Appendix C seems like something that could potentially be, having to be continuously revised, especially because, as we've learned on OCA, this process is not always universally applicable. So obviously, the process had to be slightly different between Planning Board and Zoning Board, and say, ranked choice voting, because there was joint appointing authority, and even slightly revised for Finance Committee since a lot of the structures didn't exist for it that it did. So this would be a really hard one, I think, to put in, and so I would support removing Appendix C. Other thoughts? My other colleague on OCA?
Agree.
Remove it, appendectomy.
Other...
It's true. Remove the appendix. It's good for you.
Other thoughts? So Mandy, I don't think you made that as an official motion, would you like to?
I'll make a motion to delete Appendix C from the Rules of Procedure.
A second.
Any further discussion? Okay, all of those in favor of removing Appendix C from the Rules of Procedure? Yes? All right, that's unanimous. George, you seconded that, right?
Yes, I did.
Okay, so with the removal of Appendix C and with the addition of 2.2H, the President's spokesperson, one that we did today, we have a revised Rules of Procedure that responds to everything we were asked to do by Rules of Procedure with the exception of work groups, which we'll have to say we're still working on. I think there was a request that we have this to the council for a vote on the 22nd?
First reading.
First reading, first reading, right, because we have that in our rule. So we want a first reading to the council on the 22nd. Do we feel as though we are ready to make a recommendation that the council adopt the revised Rules of Procedure? Okay.
So moved.
Pat, that's a motion?
Yes.
All right, so Pat is making a motion. What is that motion, Pat?
To recommend to the Town Council the acceptance of the revised Rules of Procedure.
Is there a second?
A second.
Discussion? Mandy?
I'm just trying to get the motion. Does the motion need to include the dates we did the revisions, or just, right now I have motion to recommend to the Town Council the acceptance of the revised Rules of Procedure? Is that good enough?
We probably should have. I don't think we need all of the dates, right?
There's not a single date.
Perhaps.
Okay, as, okay, just keep it like that?
It could just be, recommend the Town Council adopt the Rules of Procedure as revised by GOL, and we just hand it, here's our revised version.
It's in the packet, whatever.
Does that work?
So right now I have motion to recommend to the Town Council, recommend the Town Council adopt the Rules of Procedure as revised by GOL?
That would be, I guess that would be a friendly.
Would that be friendly?
Okay, any discussion on that? All right, all of those in favor?
Yes.
Jesus Christ. That probably caught that, didn't it?
It's nice to see somebody else having trouble with their mic.
I'm not used to it always being on. Okay, so we will present this to the council along with a report that details what we revised with specifics. I will write that report, I assume, since you will be...
Before, did you part of it already?
You did, thank, I was going to say, but hopefully you sent it, but now I remember.
You've got most of it done, in terms of as it relates to the rules.
And that I appreciate. Okay, so we have a couple other things on our agenda, but we're starting to, we only have a half an hour left, and so I want to actually take what is listed on the agenda in your packet. I know we have to talk about resolutions, proclamations, citations, however, I don't feel like that's as time-sensitive. But number four, discussion on referral from Town Council to advise on a policy to comply with Charter Section 7.6. I believe part of the motion from the Town Council was to report back by the 22nd, and so we should do this one now because we need to have something to report back to the council for the 22nd. Since this has a time constraint on it, let's do that. 7.6 of the Charter, right? So 7.6 of the Charter, 7.6 of the Charter, publication of candidate statements, the Town Council shall establish a process compliant with state campaign and political finance laws for candidates whose names will appear on the election ballot to publish statements regarding their candidacy on the Town Bulletin Board. So since we develop policies for the council, as we did with Public Ways, this has been referred to us to develop, so lucky us. Thoughts? There was, Mandy?
So I'm never one without thoughts.
I know.
I certainly have, based on my service on the Charter Commission, thoughts on what the Charter Commission, in a sense, looked at or thought about this, how this might look. I think we need, as a committee, to decide whether we want a opinion from the Town Attorney first on what might be possible, or whether, and then we discuss once we get that, or whether we want to discuss what we want first and say, and then ask the Town Attorney, would this be possible if we suggested this with certain caveat, you know, like all the warnings on the website or whatever that you might do? I think we need to decide which order we want to do those in. Do we want to discuss a potential idea first of what we want to recommend and then go to the Town Attorney, or do we want to go to the Town Attorney first?
How can we go to the Town Attorney if we don't have a clear sense of what it is we want them to? So I think we really do have to get some idea of what it is that we want before we can go to the Town Attorney and say, okay, this is what we want, is it legit? Seems to me, I don't, what could we, what could we bring to the Town Attorney right now before having any conversation at all that would be useful for the Town Attorney to do, or that would come back to us that would be useful? And maybe the answer is, there is something, but Mandy, what would it be that we could ask them to do or seek out for us? Is it just the basic idea of putting a candidate statement on a town website and just ask them whether that's, will that fly? Is that, I mean, we could do that, I guess, right?
So I'm also maybe, so I think part of this comes from our council discussion where Counselor Brewer, I think, felt that this would be very difficult to do and that we shouldn't even bother utilizing our time on this until we know if it's even possible. I do sort of agree with you, though, it's, would we just say, is this possible? And they might go, well, it's, I hate leaving open-ended questions for the Town Attorney. My question for Mandy Jo on top of sort of what George said was also, I mean, the Town Attorney looked at the Charter.
Exactly. That is my question.
Right? I know that you got feedback from the Town Attorney, did they have comments on this?
Maybe. I don't have that on this computer, else I'd be able to actually look it up. I can look it up after this meeting. I know personally, both the Attorney Generals and our Town Attorney looked at this, at the Charter, the preliminary Charter, the Town Attorney... The town attorney looked at both the preliminary that we sent off to the Attorney General, and then the final one that was voted on. The Attorney General only looked at the preliminary one. This provision was in the draft Charter that the Attorney General looked at. I know personally, I was surprised that this was not dinged by the Attorney General as non-allowable. But it could be because of the wording. I mean, the wording from the council, from the Charter is the town council shall establish a process compliant with state campaign and political finance laws for candidates, blah, blah, blah. So as long, we said it needs to comply, so I don't think the turn, town attorney, at that point, the town attorney or the Attorney General doesn't really have anything to object to, because we're saying it has to comply with the laws if it's done. I, yeah, so the question is, is there something that can? The Attorney General might have read that and said, they'll never find something, but they can put it in the Charter, because this doesn't violate the law. We don't know, because they didn't comment on this. You know, I, so I don't know, as, as Councilor Brewer said, I don't know whether there is something that would comply, because you're using a state resource for election candidate statement purposes. So I don't know whether we could find something that would comply. It might be good, as George said, to send something off that says, could we make sure the town website lists the names that'll appear on the ballot before the draft ballot is up? Like, could we require that? And could we allow a hyperlink to something? You know, and, you know, like, are, here's some options. Like, maybe we send some options off that says, list of names. Names with hyperlinks to candidate webpages, or Facebook pages. A statement, no more than whatever that the candidate drafts with a website that says, this is not town opinion. You know, like, could we send something like that off that says, here's some potentials, what, if any, could be done? But I can certainly look to see if our town attorney made any comments to either of our drafts on this issue completely. But I don't have that on this computer, so I can't access it right now.
Steve?
Yeah, so we know that statements are made on town websites that are opinions. So they're not, you know, like, they're not all fact-based. So there are websites that the town sponsors that are, you know, very opinionated. I have no idea how elections, you know, fit into that, but definitely there is a point of view on, you know, things that get posted. So there's all kinds of information already available about candidates. So campaign finance, right? So we already know through the finance statements how much is being donated. So I'd be very curious as to whether or not, you know, what the legality of this is. But I think simply asking the question is, now that we have to focus on this, is it legal to, you know, to put a statement on? Is a, is a totally fair question for the town attorney?
Other thoughts? George?
So it sounds like an initial inquiry might be in order. Is that what I'm hearing here? That, and Steve is suggesting it? Just sort of test the waters before we spend any of our precious time on this issue? If we can just agree on what that simple question would be. Maybe the way Steve phrased it has pretty much captured it. But do people feel like that's where we're headed? Before we spend our time on this, let's get at least some general legal opinion?
I mean, I think I favor that, unless we can very quickly determine what we'd want it to look like. But I'm not sure we can, so a question of is it legal to, for the town website to host statements of candidates that will appear on a municipal ballot? I don't know if that's the appropriate question. That tracks sort of the wording. And if so, what parameters must they follow? You know, like, if she determines it's, if the town attorney determines it is legal, can she advise us on potential parameters? Or maybe that's putting the cart before the horse. Maybe the first question we need is, is it legal? Can it be done at all? And then we need to propose what we want to do, and then she can say that works, or that's not going to. I don't know, the, Evan, you're on OCA. So you guys talked a lot with the town attorney about legality on other things. Or is this something that it would be better to have, to put that question out there and then have a conversation with her during a meeting on, how did that work with OCA, back and forths versus conversations and all?
So OCA sent the town attorney three fairly well-developed processes, and asked for the opinion on those. Basically, got back, this one will not work. This one will work. And then from there, later, had a conversation with the town attorney on some of the logistical tweaks to make sure it works. But we started with something that was fairly developed. Having gone through that process, I like the idea of getting a little bit of information ahead of time, because we probably could have saved ourselves some, some time, had we thought of those questions ahead of time. I, I, I agree with the idea of getting a little bit of information ahead of time. I don't want us to spend hours developing a process only to have it shut down. Trust me, it's not fun. I, I'm just trying to envision what the question is. Because you're right, you wouldn't just say, you wouldn't just say, saying Section 7.6 and say, hey, can we do this? Because it's like, well, if it complies with state campaign and political finance, yeah. And then you go back and you say, okay, well, how do we do that? But it's not on the attorney to come up with a process that works, that's, that's on us. So I guess the question is, what Mandy Jo said, of can a town publish statements? But then there needs to be something else, because if, if she comes back and says, yeah, in theory, cool. So that, yeah. I just, I'm not quite clear on what the actual, I, I don't know if you're writing this email to town attorney, or if I'm writing this email to town attorney?
I, I, well, I, I think it has to go through Lynn and Paul. And I'd have to look at the formal referral, because I think the referral is sort of included. It certainly has to go through Lynn and Paul in a way they need to know.
Right, certainly, but they're not going to write the questions.
The two of us could work together the next few days to do it.
So I, I, if, if I'm involved in this, I'd love a little bit of guidance from the committee of what specifically we're asking the town attorney that would be useful for us.
Is the key here the idea of a statement? In other words, it's an expression of opinion by someone who's running for office? Is that the kernel? Or, because we also mentioned web links and just names. Is the, the core issue here that you'd like some clarification on before we get started just the legality of statements of opinion? Is that really what you're after here? Would that help focus this with the lawyer, or is it something else?
So I think the else is any added bonuses. When you read the Charter, the Charter says, you know, compliant for candidates whose names will appear on the election ballot to publish statements regarding their candidacy on the town bulletin board. So, you know, hyperlinks and all of that would be a bonus.
Really, the issue is a statement, right?
But, but the Charter, compliance with the Charter is to find a way compliant that allows candidates to publish statements. Regarding their candidacy, yeah.
So that's what we need some clarification on.
Well, we don't have primaries anymore, so just generals. But, um, but yeah, municipal candidates. So maybe the question is, is a town bulletin board permitted to be used to allow candidates to publish statements regarding their candidacy? And I don't know if that's the greatest wording. We could expound on that by what that might mean on a website, or town bulletin board can mean many things, you know? Could that mean the candidate comes up with a statement and it gets, they post-tack it to the bulletin board next to the town clerk's office? Like, we could potentially maybe give a few examples. But yet, we haven't discussed any of them, so...
Including whether this is a good idea at all.
The Charter tells us.
So that's who rules.
It's fascinating, though, really trying to actually operationalize the Charter, because you can, I can't imagine all the discussions that, okay, we'll agree to this if you agree to that. But the, so we'll be the first of the 351 cities and towns to do this, we think. Yeah, okay?
I think so.
I mean, I don't see any negative drawback. I forget the laws and all that right now.
So the laws.
I, I usually ignore them. It's not true. But I, I don't see any negative drawback for having candidates' statements on the town website. It, it doesn't bother me. I mean, it's, and it sort of helps candidates who don't have a lot of money to have, you know? I, so I'm not sure, so I would like to just get an opinion about.
So it, it sounds like we, we really do agree that we'd like an opinion from the lawyer on whether statements by a candidate on a town website has any legal possibility. Is that fair?
So it sounds like, the question is, can the town publish statements regarding candidacy written by the candidate, you know, on the town bulletin board? With, of course, the understanding that when we say town bulletin board, we mean the website. Right, I mean, that's our town bulletin board. Because that might be different, you know? Maybe the, it can just go on a physical bulletin board, but these are going to go on the website. So I think we need to be clear about that. And then I guess the, do we leave it simple? Sometimes with the town attorney, it's good to just leave it as a very simple one question and follow up later. Because then, if the answer is yes, then we need to go back to the town attorney, right, and say, so what? Or do we say that in the first email? If, if yes, if no, it's, if no, the town absolutely cannot do this, then we have a whole other discussion. But if it's yes, the question is, so what, is there content that cannot be in that statement? Because maybe they can say, hi, my name is Evan, and I live at 40 Spalding Street. But I can't say, hi, my name is Evan, I live at 40 Spalding Street, and I think that we should eliminate the Department of Public Works, right? I don't. But, you know, like, maybe, maybe that latter thing, you cannot put that on the town website, right? Because the town can't use resources to argue against the town. I, right, like, there's, there's maybe a weird.
So then we get into the content.
Right. There is the larger issue that Pat has raised, that I would love to have a discussion on, but we could talk about it for a long time, we don't want to do it now, whether this actually is a good idea at all. I have my personal views on it, Pat has hers, and I might change my view. But again, it sounds like we would like at least an initial opinion. That, or would you rather have this discussion before we waste, waste, I'm not sure that's a great word, that word I want to use, but employ our attorney doing, looking into this?
I mean, I think an initial yes or no would be helpful, because it might come back. Campaign finance laws do not allow the town website to be used for any election purposes, and a statement created by the candidate is an election purpose, so no. You know, like, that might be the answer, that it just can't be done.
It would be refreshing to get a simple yes or no from a lawyer. Maybe that would happen.
I think if the answer is yes, maybe the question we want to follow up with is, are there limitations to what can be done? You know, what limitations could we put on the statements? Could, you know, could we put a content limitation? Probably not. But can we put a length limitation, potentially? You know, is it, are we allowed to say it can't be more than two sentences? You know, like, are there any limits we could put on it? If we allow it? But I don't know whether that's getting the cart before the horse versus, let's get a yes, and then maybe if, if the, if the answer is yes, we come back, we discuss, and then we send something specific like OCA did.
So, and that was my question. Is the first email like a one, simple question, yes or no? Or is it a, if yes, here's other questions?
I think that would be wise.
Which one? I give you two.
A or B? B.
You know, the general question, and if it is legal, then what are other?
Well, considering this is, if I've heard correctly, this has never been done in the Commonwealth. I have a feeling the lawyer probably won't have any thing to go on beyond yes or no. In other words, well, then what can you do? The answer is, nobody's done it, so, you know, nobody knows. I think the, the basic question is, can this even be done? And that may turn out to be a, a complex and thorny issue, but maybe it would be simple. I'm hoping it's simple, and I hope the answer is, well, I won't say it, but...
All right. So Mandy Jo and I are going to write an email that will go through Lynn and Paul, through the town attorney, to ask for an opinion on this. We should put a request back by... When's our next meeting, the 23rd? 24th? We want it back by our meeting on the 24th, or this, or August 7th? We could ask for it by the 24th.
I'm in no rush, but...
So papers for candidates for the current election cycle are due in September. I had that date somewhere.
There is a bit of a time frame.
Due the September 17th. So if, if there's something that is allowed, we should probably get a recommendation to the council by the 17th, so that the council could adopt prior to then, so that when papers are due and certified, the town's got an idea of what might be going on. But that gives us, what's our first August meeting?
The 7th.
Maybe by the 7th? That would give us two meetings to discuss before we send it to the council on the 9th of September.
Yeah, so we have, we have four meetings before September 17th, GOL, so...
If we send a policy to the council on the 9th, it might have to go through that immediately, a vote that day? I don't know.
What's the council calendar? What's the other meeting in September?
The 23rd's the other one. Which adoption then, three days af, a week after papers are due, might not be horrible.
No.
Election's not till November.
Right. I, I mean, so that's sort of my thing is, it doesn't, even if we adapt it on the 23rd, it's not going to go up on the 23rd, because they still need time to, they might have to create a webpage, right? But also, I don't think it needs to go up the moment that we have a full list of candidates.
Yeah.
Right, could go up, could go up in mid-October, honestly, like... So, so we'll say, the, we're requesting back for the 7th.
August 5th, then? We might as well make it two days before meeting.
Yeah, we probably should be able to read it before. Although that hasn't always been the case.
How responsive is the town attorney to deadlines?
The camera's on.
It's like trying to find a doctor in a wrong vacation.
All right, so we're starting to get a little short on time. And so I want to just make sure we take care of minutes, since we do have three sets of minutes. May 22nd, June 5th, and June 19th. So please, June 5th. May 22nd. And so we have two. We have, but we have two sets from June 5th. There's draft one and draft two, right?
Draft two is the most current.
That, that makes sense. That, that makes sense.
And then the, on May 22nd, there are, one, there's a draft with my revisions that has been usurped by the May 22nd, 2019, one that was uploaded this morning. The one that's titled Minutes, May 22nd, 2019, is the current one.
The correct one that we're looking at? Okay. Do we have any edits to these three sets of minutes? Any edits?
I'll move to approve the bottom.
I would second that motion.
Any, any edits? Mandy? All right, so motion to adopt the minutes of May 22nd, 2019, June 5th, and June 19th has been made and seconded. All those in favor? Raise your hands, all right, and that's unanimous. So we don't have any public presence, so we don't need to do public comment. We don't really have time to get, so we have two things on the agenda that we haven't yet done. One is create and recommend a policy for resolutions, proclamations, and citations. We don't, I don't think that we can do that in seven minutes, but I, I, I am curious, George, if you had an ability to.
I am ready and ready to roll here, but that's okay, we can put this off. I did have a conversation with Alyssa, and it was quite fruitful, and I have spent just a few moments of my time, precious time, trying to come up with definition of these terms, which I'll be happy to share with you at a future meeting, but I think it probably should be put off. Also, flags came up, and I would like to also speak about, briefly about that, and what I learned from Alyssa about that. And so it's proclamations, resolutions, commemorations, and citations, and flags, for a future, maybe next meeting.
Okay, is there anything, I'm just trying to think if you have, you have papers in front of you. Do you just have notes, or did you actually have draft information?
I just have notes from my conversation, and I have short definitions that we could use to, I mean, if people want to spend the time, but I think it probably would be helpful. One of the suggestions Alyssa made was, try to make, just get clear on what these all, you know, what are the differences? And I think they're pretty clear, but just, we should talk about it. And I could certainly furnish that next time as simply a document for us to look at, or I could send it to you, it's very simple, it's like four sentences, but.
Is it already done?
Just from, I haven't, I could easily do it, and what, put, load it on, put it on the, on our site? For people to look at before the next meeting, what's, what would you prefer? Or, it's just, these are sample definitions, these things to look at for these four terms, resolution, proclamation, citation, and commemoration.
Mandy, you got some, Alyssa?
Any thoughts?
I was just going to say that if you distribute it today, or say that it will be distributed, that meet, that complies with open media laws, so that then you can, then it can be uploaded to.
Then I can be, so I, I can say that I will share it with you?
Yeah.
And, and then we can talk about it when we meet next. My notes are really just my notes. I don't feel like I want to, or should, share them.
That's fine, so if you, so before our next meeting, I'll, I'll create a packet for next meeting. I can do that today, and when you can, upload those definitions so that we can read them ahead of time and have a, a starting off point, and hopefully, barring anything major happening, open with that at our July 24th meeting.
Now, would you, you have been very good about sort of thinking about these, like you did today, and sort of guiding the discussion. Do you want me to do something similar, or do you want to just, we could just throw it open, but sort of have, sort of a, a template in mind, or a process in mind as we work through it? Do you want me to take the lead on this, or do you want to just, we have the definitions, let's just talk about it?
It's hard for me to give an answer on that without knowing more about your conversation with Alyssa, so maybe, since, since we don't have any real time pressure on this, we have, we have like really three meetings before the council takes up any substantive business. Perhaps we can just start with a discussion, and then, in the same way that I took some of the opinions I got on work groups from our initial discussion, right? I didn't create that from scratch, I was from what I heard from you and Mandy Jo. And then the other thing we had on our agenda was continue follow-up on town committee charge request. We have a table, a spreadsheet from George that has been uploaded. So, our beginnings.
And people should just look it over and see what's missing, or if they'd like something added, it's, it's really just a list. And if they would like more detailed information, or if they're, particularly if we're missing something from that list, it's just to guide us.
Okay, so George will be the star of next meeting, we'll open up with proclamations, and then we'll also have follow-up on town committee charge. Any final comments before we adjourn? Mandy Jo?
I, I won't be at the next meeting, but if flags are taken up, just put them as a separate agenda item, because that's a revisiting of the public ways policy. So it should be listed as a revisit public ways policy regarding flags and commemorative flags.
And I just want to mention two things, just if that's okay, of potential future agenda items, or people, things to think about. One is the issue of town websites in general and expressions of opinion, this is something that Lynn mentioned to me as well. The particular example has to do with 132 Northampton Road, but whether there is or needs to be a policy about what is permitted or what isn't permitted. One of our members today mentioned that there is a fair number, a fair amount of opinionating on town websites, and I think that's something, I don't know if this would be appropriate for this body, but somewhere I think we should, we should talk about it, and whether we need to have a policy on this, or whether it's just, I would think, generally speaking, that it should not be a place for opinion. But anyway, that's one thing I'd like us to consider thinking about. And the other is just what I call electoral reform, is that something that this body should take up as? Just issued, generally speaking, of, you know, oh, a whole host of things. One of them has already been, come up, the finance reform, student engagement, non-resident voting, there are a whole host of issues related to this. I wonder if that relates to governance, or, yeah, it's, yeah, something to think about. This is Counsel's comment, right?
Yeah, yeah.
So it may be something that nobody wants to talk about, but that's fine.
I'd like to talk about that.
At some point, some future date, there's a host of issues related to what I consider electoral, or elections, electoral reform, that may or may not be appropriate for this body to look into.
All right, so with that, we will adjourn the meeting at 12:29 PM.
Nice job. Thank you, Evan.